It's close to around 7 o'clock. We'll open the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, February 10th, 2020. Present Jerry, Bob, Dan and myself. I know Peter's not going to be in and I don't know if Kasai is going to show up later on. All right, I don't know if there was a mix-up with the postings that the party trust hearing for Amanda Estates did not make the notification, so we will not be hearing Amanda Estates tonight. We're going to try to reschedule depending on availability of Amy Questle, so see if she could attend and what do they have for available dates?
So her two February dates were February 20th, which is a Thursday, and February 24th, which is a Monday. Peter said that the 24th was good for him. Bob said that 20th was good for him, so.
Who said the 24th?
Peter.
Peter? How are you looking?
Either one's fine, I think. Either one's fine, I think.
And you can't do the 20th, but you can't do the 24th? Well, then why don't we do the, let's shoot for the 20th.
Okay.
We'll have to notify Kasai and Amy, of course.
Okay.
And then we'll see if that's okay with the party trust also.
Okay.
All right, well, we'll shoot for February 20th.
February 20th, okay.
What day, what did we say that was?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Is it Thursday?
Yes.
And the 24th, that's a fallback for everybody?
Well, no, Bob can't make it for the 24th, so it will be the 20th, the 20th or the 20th. Well, we'll shoot for the 20th. We'll try 7 o'clock if that's okay.
7 o'clock on the 20th, okay.
All right, good stuff. Okay, what do we have for? Okay, seeing as 7 o'clock, petition number 917. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 10th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. It says here in the great hall, Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by 2012 LLC for a special permit for interior renovations located at 275 Home Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by 2012 LLC, shown on assessors map 33, lot 12, title reference book 50635, page 72. The applicants are seeking a special permit for interior renovations that would constitute a continuation of a non-conforming use, alteration of a non-conforming use with a renovation value exceeding 50% of the real market value, and an extension of a non-conforming use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section 167, 8A, B and C. Area is zoned residential, petition 917. Hi, how are we doing?
Good.
Who is this?
This is Nick.
Okay, wait on the end.
Yes.
Hi, you want to explain to us what you're doing, please?
We are gutting out the first floor. We're going to make it into a more usable layout. The second floor of one wall will be moved and we're going to make a bedroom smaller with a bathroom in there and make the other bedroom a little larger.
Do we have plans or anything?
We do. We submit plans. We have some with me.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. Your name?
Nick Schneider. So.
And your address, Nick?
My address or the company address?
The company address, it'd be great.
P.O. Box 36008, Plymouth, Mass. 02361. So this is the existing room, we're going to leave it outside of it. Well, we are going to, but not outside the footprint, the existing footprint. And here's your plan.
Sure.
So what's happening? Sorry, I bring my glasses. So here's the plan here. These are existing walls, so all those will go and then this will be the new layout upstairs. So those are the plans, all right. Highlighted if there are any changes.
So these walls are coming down?
Correct. And then this will, that's the second floor and then this will be the new second floor plan. Makes sense to me. And I also don't think it will exceed, but the building environment says it will.
Is that it? That's all, that's the only thing you're changing in?
Well, the first floor is what's happening is these right now, this existing wall. So there's a wall here, a wall here, a wall here, a wall here. All those will come out and it will be more of an open layout. So we'll have the bathroom, will be under here where that is now, and then this whole area will be open. And the engineering plans are on the next page, how that will occur. A frame diagram.
So nothing on the footprint is changing?
Nothing.
And there is a second floor on the, on the existing home right now?
Yes.
I'll open up to any questions from members of the board?
What is the value of the house right now?
Now or after the renovation? I don't, I'm not in a hurry.
Well, I think you're saying you're going to be, you're going to spend 50% more than the value of the house.
I'm not saying that. Building department's saying that. I don't think that's going to be.
What is the value of the house right now?
I think the value of the house right now is about $275,000. I think improved, maybe 305, 315.
And those are the only interior changes you're making?
Yes. It's an import issue. It was bought at foreclosure auction.
Where is it?
So where the train tracks are, it's two lots over to the south. It has some privet bushes in the front, the driveway's a horseshoe, there's a bunch of junk in the back, wood, all that stuff, it's all gone now, it was put into a dumpster, but it was what I would consider lighted.
I mean, you put a roof on it, windows or?
I think the windows are okay, they're vinyl. But that's going to be a call.
I'm just trying to get a feel for it.
It's going to be.
Why are you getting 50% more than the value of the house?
I think it was because we're gutting the whole first floor.
Okay.
So.
Down to the studs?
Down to the studs. We're going to re-insulate with whatever code requires. You know, new kitchen. The building inspector seems to think that it will cost more than 50% of the value. I don't understand the bylaw. I think it's kind of open for interpretation. 50% of the value of the building, of the property with the land, the assessed value, appraised value, so I didn't want to argue it, so we're here. Yeah, if I have to argue it, I guess you have to appeal to Boston, that's what the attorney said.
Dan, you have any questions?
It's going to be done.
This review of the bylaws being referenced. So nothing on the outside, no windows, no roof, what they're saying, it's just interior work?
Is that the other?
That's the other question.
That's not it. Oh yeah, just interior work.
So it is taking opening up, maybe more of an open floor plan?
Yeah. We'll probably do, if it gets to the spring, if it doesn't, we'd like to do siding, but as far as interior, that's it.
Under this permit, you're seeking, you're not doing siding?
Correct. This is an interior renovation permit.
Flooring inside?
I don't, we're going to have to do flooring, yeah, I don't know.
What do you do flooring?
If there's hardwoods there, which I think there is, I can't, haven't put in there in about six months, we've refinished the hardwoods. If not, then it's all new hardwoods.
Any update to the electrical system, plumbing?
It's all going to have to be new. It's gutted, so.
When you say all, the whole interior?
No, the first floor will be gutted. So that's all going, that's all going to need to be up to today's electrical code.
Have you had, now you bought this on short sale, you said?
Foreclosure auction.
Foreclosure. Is this for the homeowner or for resale?
It should be for resale.
Now, do you have a projected, have anybody do a market analysis or an appraisal, what you think it's going to be worth at the time?
Other than my own, no.
All right, so you haven't had, you know what you want to put on market for?
I.
In other words, that's going to tell us whether we're looking at 50% or not?
Yeah.
That's what I'm going after.
We're shooting for around 315.
And you bought it with buy floor?
I don't have that. It's just beyond the sun here. I don't know exactly, I can't vote it much, it's time to look it up. It was over a year ago, but I like the process.
And what did they, did the building inspector give you, anyone his letter?
He didn't.
He didn't?
It was just a broad letter and then the bylaws are more gentle. Thank you guys, just a minute, to be honest, a couple bucks. Yeah, it says, "Nonconformant structure may not be altered, but the cost of such alteration exceeds 50% of the real market valuation of the structure at the time of the change."
And you don't own what you bought it for?
Look it up.
The building's assessed at 114.
And that's not?
Real market values.
That's not real market value.
A town assessment for real market value.
What's that?
Real market values, a little more for town assessment.
That's not real, a foreclosure auction price wouldn't be real market value, so I don't think that's relevant, but I can look it up if you must know.
You're saying the town has it 114?
Yeah.
So has he seen, the building inspector seen the revisions to the plan?
Yeah, he's been out to the property, so.
When was that?
Whenever the permit was pulled, because we had to pull a demo permit to get all the stuff out.
Because his letter dated to you was December 2000, the 30th, 2019?
Right. I believe we pulled a permit, a demo permit before that. And then we pulled the permit to do the improvements afterwards, which then was the night. I'm here because I live the closest. That matters, so.
Okay, in the file, the building inspector, his letter issued December 30th, 2019. Your application for a building permit to alter and renovate the interior of the home located at 275 Home Street, Halifax, as per plan submitted, has been denied by this department for the following reasons. Your project would constitute a continuation of a non-conforming use, 167-78A, an alteration of a, of a non-conforming use, 167-8B, and an extension, and an extension of a non-conforming use, 167-8C, requiring a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. If you wish to pursue this matter, you may appeal the building inspector's decision by filing with the zoning board of appeals within 30 days of that decision. Apply for variance and/or a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Applications are available with the regulatory board secretary of the town clerk's office, Robert Picarelli, building inspector and zoning enforcement officer.
But we're looking for a special permit to exceed 50% value, is why we're here today. I think I'm arguing something that's mute. That's what we're looking for. And it was 140,000 was the acquisition price.
You didn't answer me.
It was 140,000.
140,000.
Yes.
This is the, this is what the town has assessed up, that's usually a little less, 1148.
But either, either way, we're applying for a special permit to exceed that number.
And a special permit for interior renovations that would constitute a continuation of a non-conforming use.
Correct.
An alteration of a non-conforming use with a renovation value exceeding 50% of the real market value, and an extension of a non-conforming use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax.
Correct.
Right, so the question is, are we talking real market, does that mean of the building or of the whole property?
The whole property, 235.
Doesn't trail in specificism?
Current, 249. That's what I mean, I think that's.
What we're looking at.
Oh, what's it say? What's it read?
It's right here.
Thank you.
Got it.
An alteration, a non-conforming structure may not be altered.
The structures.
50% of the real market valuation of the structure.
It was 114.
Well, market value's a little more than that, so.
50%?
Like 130, 135. Without looking at it.
What bit of luck does this sit on?
40,000, 50.
It is 40,000?
Yeah, it's 40,000, I think I have the plans. So it sits, non-conforming, I think it's 29, and then it's not set back enough.
So you're not doing like granite countertops and stainless steel?
Well, we are, we are.
You are, right there?
We are, yes. It's, it's just subjective, like everybody's cost isn't the same, you know, this is what.
So what are you looking at? What are your costs per square foot? I guess that's the easiest.
Yeah, we were projecting this to be around 50 or 60,000, yeah.
You're going to be putting in 50 to 60,000?
That's what our hope is.
I think it's okay, then.
I mean, I'd like it to be less, but I don't think it's going to.
Of course.
You know, I don't.
So you're not encroaching to the sidewalk lines, you're not increasing the footprint at all?
No.
Nothing?
No, it's staying exactly the same except for the, the interior is going to be altered. We're going to move some non-structural walls on the second floor.
Oh, so you know we're.
We're going to move structural walls on the first floor.
And it's raised only 90 feet of frontage on it. Well, any questions or anything, any other questions?
I think they made this foreclosure, you're fixing it up so that it's going to be back into a taxable property to speak of, yeah. It's all interior, there's no physical, he's not expanding it, he's not changing anything else except for fixing up the interior of the, of the house.
Okay, let's see, voting on this will, will be the five members present. Alana, Kasai is here. What's the pleasure of the board? Is it necessary to go out and take a look at this or what do you want to, everybody familiar with this or do we need to do a site inspection? Would you like to do a site inspection?
You're welcome to it.
I'm familiar with the area, so.
Yeah, I mean, I have two, as far as they're concerned, yeah.
This is right next to DeMayo's house, still to the left of it, so between DeMayo's and, and Wood Place. Is it still a Wood Place? You know what I mean? It's on the opposite side of where the entranceway to the railroad station is.
All right, I'll take a. I'll make a motion to forego the site inspection?
Do I have a second?
Petition number 917.
And a second?
Second, Kasai got it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to waive the site inspection. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5 to 0 to 0. All right, how about a motion on the petition, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to accept petition number 917. As stated, the value will exceed 50, 50% of the real estate market value. Interior renovations only, not doing any physical extensions of the house or changing the location of the house?
No.
Any contingencies or anything wrong with the, I mean, as a, Phil, I'm sure he knows, any substantial change, we'll have to come back.
Yes.
To the board? Okay, I have a, you all good with that? It's a good, you know what I mean, okay. There's a motion on the floor to accept petition number 917 as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to accept petition number 917. I'll call for a voice vote, Kasai?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Dan, let's go 5-0. No, I thought we were going to fix 5-0.
Yep.
And Dan, 5 to 0 to 0. It passes, so Alana will explain to you how, you know, with the waiting period and registering with the registry of deeds and we'll go from there.
This really is straightforward, thank you guys. You are welcome to look along with it.
And we have this in our file, right?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
I can leave this with you if you like it, but we definitely.
I think there is one in here.
Yeah, we have one, thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. It'll be very nice when it's done.
Promise.
They always are. All right, thank you.
And if you have any questions, straight call.
Okay.
Okay, seeing that we're running a little late, the Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 10th, 2020 at 7:15 PM in the great hall. That was, yeah, that's the right one, it was 902. Where am I? In the great hall, located at 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by David A. Rotis/Scrooge Contracting Company to build an addition for an in-law apartment to be located at 292 Thompson Street in Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Maurice Isar and Myrna Habib, 292 Thompson Street, Halifax, Mass, or 2338, as shown on assessors map 89, lot 1C, title reference book 36989, page 311. The applicant is seeking a special permit and variance to construct a 24 by 36 addition in a 16 by 18 sunroom. As this addition will be 1,242 square feet, larger than 50% of the first floor living space of the main residence, the applicant is also seeking a variance to waive this requirement for an in-law apartment in accordance with the zoning bylaw of the town of Halifax under Schedule of Use Regulation, section 167-7D12. Area is zoned agricultural residential, petition number 902. Hi, how are we doing? Good, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. David Rotis/Scrooge Contracting Company represent my client, Myrna, behind me. With since our last meeting, I've updated certified plot plan depicting the work that we propose to do. I have several plans if you want to.
Do we have them in our file?
These are the ones, I don't believe in the file, so. Everything but this portion here is not in the file, but I have five documents with me to do.
Okay, so what are we, what are we changing? What's different?
So, so while we just, I think it was just a verbiage change, so, so Ian, you want it on a certified plot, but basically this is as written in the request. So it's, here's the, here's the in-law, 24 by 36.
That's existing?
No, that's, that's the proposed.
Oh, this is.
Everything hashed, this, everything here is.
Okay.
Yeah, proposed 24 by 36 in-law, proposed 16 by 18 ground level sunroom, and this is the common area that we created with the two six-foot openings from either the in-law apartment and the existing dwelling.
I think you removed some other references to existing decks or something?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was some burden, some, there was an existing deck, it was basically where that nine by 10 was that I deleted from the original drawing, which I do have the original drawing if we did.
But this is actually going to be built now?
Correct, correct, that's new, this is fresh, off the first.
This is the.
No, this is, this is the brick there, there. Do you want to see the other one?
No, I just want to make sure the required, what's required in the application, that you have five in the file. Okay, what did we decide with the openings and all that other stuff we were looking at?
So in this, in this nine by 10 area, which is, which is going to become a common area, there's a six-foot cased opening from the existing dwelling into that and also from the proposed in-law into that. So two six-foot openings in that area, both of them will be able to access the sunroom.
The sunroom's accessed through the nine by 10 common area? Was that correct?
Correct, correct. And from the outside, this is on, at grade, so there'll be an exterior door to their patio area, but basically it'll be either access from this, so both dwellings can utilize the sunroom from that common area.
Do we have that? Do we have a plot plan, a, a plan showing that? Don't you have a first floor plan? Did you submit that from the last time?
I, yes, I do. I'm not sure if I brought any more copies of that, but let me see what I have.
Oh, so they showed a door, a six-foot opening and a six-foot opening.
And a, and a nine by 10 area?
Yeah. Six foot, six foot and a door. Well, this, he said was, was ground area, right? Or you?
Correct, that's, that's great, that's on grade, yes. That's like a lanai, the, Myrna's mother-in-law lives in Florida, so they're big lanai fans, so this is basically a lanai, but it's with glass and it's bolt glass and screen, but it's, it's, it's commercial one on, on et grade.
Okay, and what do we have here?
That I thought you, this was the, this is the drawing I had last week. It didn't depict the, the common area, wasn't.
The nine by 10?
Yeah.
Okay, same thing, I think we reviewed in, in the last meeting, but just so we can go through it, separate utilities, shared utilities?
Shared utilities, both, so, so water and electric, sub panel electrically, water, common water, sewer, we're just going to make and we're going to add an invert and increase the septic system for another 75 feet. The engineer's already looked at that, so basically sewer will be common, water and power. No additional feed from the street, a sub panel from her panel to the new.
One meter, so it's shared?
Correct.
Any other questions, gentlemen? How many bedrooms are we talking on this here?
There's two bedrooms.
I mean, that's, that's the same as what originally was.
Yeah, that, that hasn't changed.
Yeah, separate heating system or the same?
Duckless mini-split, so a different heating system, because it's, it's probably basically going to be used seasonably, seasonally.
But it's electric on my bill, it's my mother. Technically, it's the same, I'm paying for it.
What about the, is that satisfy you guys with the, with the common area as long as it?
Yep.
With the openings?
Worked out perfect for us.
What's it going to be used for?
Playroom.
Is that laundry?
Yeah, she has two small children that, for a playroom for them, and I may, I may try to configure a laundry room in that, because her laundry room's kind of not configured too well, burdening her actual first floor bath, so I may delete the first floor bath, excuse me, the first floor laundry and move it into that area, but it's kind of tight, so I got to make sure I can fit it, but.
I don't know why I thought, I remembered that it was going to be a laundry area. Nope, or I got it confused with something else?
Yeah, honestly, I think, I think I just didn't have the, the common area depicted on this plan, so I think that was why we got bumped last month.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Did, we can already vote on it on the site inspection on this one, did we, I don't even think we got that hot.
Did we get that for?
The first meeting, you considered passing the site inspection.
The first meeting, you considered passing the site inspection.
It's a substantial size lot.
40,000 square feet, 150 feet of frontage? Well, is the board feel about a site inspection or, or waive the site inspection?
I'll make a motion to waive the site inspection.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that's, and seconded to waive the site inspection. Five members here, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5, 0 to 0. We, we have this one in the file, so you can take this one.
Yes, sir.
That you just gave me?
Yep.
The new ones? I'm sorry?
Lot of names. Do you want the full, full amount?
Four, you will.
Yes. May I retain, I have, how many do you need? I brought five. May I retain one, but if you need off, I'll go back. Thank you, sir.
I think the, what's the permit called?
I thought it was true, but I could be mistaken.
Alana, what's the permit called for the real life?
For coffee, so, perfect. I'll let one of you guys elect for real.
Down, down, Summer Street.
I think the permit's different. I'll, I'll, I'll make coffee, so.
No, 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 I'm talking, I'm talking, oh, the big ones, yeah, the big ones.
Okay. Two? So, you're gonna be looking at Highland to the right?
Where?
If you're going down 105, it's after the power lines, the second or third house.
What's that? And then after the horses?
Lot of names, Ted, guys.
Fallen soldiers.
Fallen soldiers.
Okay, I'll, I'll accept the motion regarding petition number 902. 2, 3, 4. Okay? Yep, perfect. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Oh, thank you.
I'll make a motion to...
I'll make some up.
To accept petition number 902. Stated, and the drawings that are presented, and also the interior drawing, that's, that's in the folder, showing the two six-foot openings between the in-law apartment and the, and the main, main home.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to accept petition number 9, 902 with, with the contingencies. Do I have a second? Second? Okay, I'll, is a motion on the floor has been seconded to accept petition number 902 as presented. I'll call for a voice vote, Kasai?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes.
And Jerry, yes. 5, 0 to 0, it passes. Okay, Alana, go through the, the whole procedure with you. Alright, thank you. So, considering then that basically bottom line, we do have a mix-up with the, with the postings as far as on the internet and what, the website, that's all we can do tonight. So, we rescheduled the hearing for, what'd we say, February 20th?
February 20th, at 7:00 PM. I'll make sure that it's okay with, I'm trying to pass a bunch of issues, because that was...
Okay. Tentatively for the 20th then, and we'll, we'll go from there. Do we have to make a motion on, yeah, why don't we do that? Do I have a motion to, to reschedule the Amanda Estates, the potty trust hearing for February 20th? If it's all workable with all potties involved?
It's up to them.
Do I have a motion to, to...
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Passes 5, 0 to 0, to hopefully reschedule for the 20th. Alright, how about a motion to adjourn, because we can't...
Motion to adjourn.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.